Alright, roll night. For the total of like zero viewers.
Does anybody ever watch these?
I've watched them after the fact.
Yeah.
So we have one view.
Post your plug, your buds in, down the fairground.
I guess the first time I came here. I didn't really move around, so I moved back.
That's why I always wear the hat.
Yeah.
And get nitrate samples. First samples for markets ever. Good, how are you? Yeah, see, I told you about it. He just went outside and he...
What's that?
Do you go to the big hall?
I do.
What's that?
Hey.
How are they doing up there?
How are you doing, people?
This is Joyce.
Hi. Nice to meet ya.
You tear the...
Yep. Slow down.
Down, slide, turn it.
And about that.
Look like it's tired on Monday.
Did you survive Louis Townes before?
Yeah.
Did you? Did Louis Townes survive that?
Sure did.
You're like Jerry.
Oh, it was Jerry, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, I do. My name is...
Oh, must be David.
Oh, look at you. I'm not saying this to you.
She got the tour of the, uh, the hospital.
She...
I'll talk to you.
Alright, here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Walk you good.
It's bleeding. This thing started last week. Going, I guess. His first name is Austin.
Austin?
I don't remember that. It's bleeding.
Okay.
It's dry.
Okay. Jack?
Uh, fair is encompassing most of my time. I do have a Hayfield inspection today for Noxious Week seat free certification. And then I'm gonna go take nitrate samples this afternoon. But other than that, it's pretty much all fair until September, maybe October.
Dustin?
Uh, replaced the fair for the... Replaced the baseboards on the round pin just last weekend. Should have new toilets being put in this week. Just get ready for fair, we're two weeks away. Seventeen days, in case you were wondering. Thanks.
I wasn't, thank you.
That's it?
That's it, that's all I got.
Um, at convention last week in Louis Townes, um, got some great information to bring back. And, um, I want to introduce, I brought Rebecca around and introduced her to most everybody, but there's a few I missed. But this is Rebecca by field, she's gonna be definitely quickly cornered. Back in and stuff, I'd say hi to her.
Welcome aboard. Peggy?
I have nothing to report.
What?
What? That says a lot.
Joyce?
Well, just getting some fair stuff too, calls in from some out of the area food vendors. Basically, gonna be at the water sewer meeting in Jackson on Thursday night with Tina and Tom. To figure out some things going on there. We've just been taking you up quite a lot of the time, actually. And then just finished, still working on inspections, still running around the county, getting those done, so. That's pretty much it.
You both? Or, so?
You know, that is, my real first name is Robert, so...
Is it? Okay, yeah, I knew that, so... Tori?
Well, I went to Missoula to, uh, training, OPI had a, a training on the grants. And you, really something that the clerks needed to go to. Uh, I think they'd gone to get, gone to those trainings in the past, but it was, it was kind of interesting about the processes and the, and the sources of monies and stuff. And then tomorrow we have a, about a five hour online Zoom meeting to talk about the, um, scheduled testing through the, through the school year. And we do have two new teachers, so they'll be, uh, really paying attention to that. And I have to get one of them into the system. And then on Thursday, we have our world teachers, um, orientation up at the university. And, uh, we have, again, the, the two new people that weren't there last year, so it'll be kind of interesting. That'll be it for me.
The, the reason I missed your name is I, I just can't feature in my mind that you absence having problems. It's just so, it's so crazy. Not possible. Judge?
Let's see, we are carrying out for our jury trial next week, um, in an FWP case this week. My staff is just making sure we have all the proper forms and binders and we're ordering our food and our drinks and getting ready for that show. Um, it's scheduled for two days, but I anticipate it should be done in one. I don't know why we'll need two, but we're planning for two.
I don't know why we'll need trial.
Well, that's, yeah, I'm neutral. I can't make a decision.
How many jury? Court's been sent out already?
For the year.
Oh, oh, I thought you were talking about the jury trial.
Jury summonses were sent out a couple of weeks ago, so if you didn't get one, you're not on this jury. Um, let's see, I have kind of a side project that I'm trying to start. It's brought to my attention that our food bank is kind of in a desperate place. And when I talked to the director over there, I was told that they're expecting a 20% increase in people um, once the SNAP funds are cut, like, like it's being discussed. So something that I'm tossing around doing is what's called Food for Fines. And the MCE statute actually allows people to donate food to local food banks in exchange for, uh, forgiveness of their court fines. So I'm trying to partner with Judge Knox to do that. Um, I talked to Judge Berger about doing it also, but I don't think him. And I agree that it's probably not appropriate to accept food for a felony as it would be for a misdemeanor. I just don't feel it's society would be on board to that. Um, but for a traffic ticket, you know, I think it's worth it. So trying to get that together, I go tour the food bank tomorrow and talk to the director about some dates and how to make that work. And hopefully City Court joins us so that we can get more participation. And hopefully the county is okay with that. And put on the...
Got pretty quiet there.
And what else? Oh, outside of court, um, Dylan has a very special, um, show being offered, one time thing. The Silhouettes A G T, um, Goldblazer Act from season 11. They're doing a hero's tribute at the Contour Event Center in November. And there's gonna be free admission for veterans, active service, first responders. You guys, the families could get in free to this family friendly show. And I promise you, it will move you to tears and make you just proud to be an American. So that's coming in November. Um, we're hoping to do some school shows. My daughter's on the cast, that's why I'm like pushing it. Um, but it's, it's really gonna be amazing, so I hope you can join us. That's all.
What?
Um, not a whole lot different from last week. Jackson, obviously, has been taking up a lot of time this week. And, um, they're doing a five mile Creeperhead River restoration behind the, uh, Diamondo Ranch. And the first case of that just got cremated. So that's gonna be happening and, yeah, pretty much early out this week.
Good, first week?
Lots of IT work. Um, last week, we inch really close to being bug free at the scale, so I'm thinking we're gonna probably go live the next week or two with that project. So, um, that and just lots of phone and IT stuff coming on, so...
Do you, um, you have the used laptop?
Yep, I'm, you know, moving down that, Austin wants a computer and email down there for ordering parts and stuff, for mechanics, getting set up.
Good. Sheriff Department.
We've been a bit busy. Got some new computers through the dispatch center. Seems we worked a bug out of that yet?
Still working some bugs out of that. None of those computers were getting up there in age, get crashed three or four times a shift, so...
Yeah.
Got all them computers and we're, um, Jack said it had crashed on them all weekend, so that's a good sign. Uh, we got eighteen or nineteen downstairs. And that's about it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Kate, the trial next week's the guy that shot Moose. Let all the meat go to waste. So I don't know why we're going to trial, but we are, so geared up for that. Got a meeting later today with a bunch of folks regarding the issues between the legislative audit division and the office of the court administrator. Everybody is, uh, working together to come to a great resolution to that, I hope. Look forward to attending the water and sewer meeting in Jackson on Thursday night with everybody else. It sounds like a lot of pretty good contingent from Dylan. I've got a meeting later, uh, this week with the, the hospital about some of the, uh, some of the charges that we've, that we're working out with them regarding inmates going over there. Yeah, and then just a quick announcement, we're hosting a fair entry competition for anybody in the county that wants to enter. You'll use enter up, and then you're randomly, it's a random selection as to what event or what you submit to the fair. So it might be a floral arrangement, or it might be a painting, or it might be a cross stitch. It's not, not gonna be any too complex, but then there's a competition to see who does the best in their randomly selected event. And if you get, and then if you don't enter anything, you gotta pay a little fine. And then the money all goes to food bank, so... We'll have a sign up sheet in our office, but, uh, yeah, other than that, we're getting ready for trials and bad guys keep doing bad things. Not the ones we ship out of town, though. They do bad things somewhere else. Went to Omack this weekend, uh, the Omack Suicide Race. It was great to experience the, the culture of thing they got going over there, but that's not something I need to see again. It is aptly named.
Right on the rails.
Yeah, it was nineteen up started the race and handful of made it to the arena. Pretty wild.
Any ambulances leave with people?
No, but they did turn the lights off, uh, after they came down the hill. They, everybody got to the bottom of the hill and they shut all the lights down for the rest of the race so that nobody could see the carnage. That was more interesting. Probably horses, yeah. Definitely men, probably horses.
You get that sandy soil.
Yeah. Yeah, straight down the hill and so on. Pretty wild.
Anything else? Get mine.
Make mine do that.
Thank you guys, I guess, have a good week.
Good, thank you, appreciate it.
Joyce, what time is that meeting?
Hello?
Her name's... Six o'clock, so I don't think it's six o'clock now. I bet it's six, but maybe...
No, we said just one. There's no need there.
If you find out, would you mind letting me know?
I will. Yes, Ellen likes to be there earlier, like, but...
It's our Friday. Yeah, it's a quick one.
I need to come home, I guess, get it out of here.
You got a skunk in your mansion? You got a skunk in the basement?
What's that?
You got a skunk in the basement now? You got a skunk in the basement?
No, the, the guy, McCoy's leasing my old place, right around my house. I put a semi load of hay out, it's outside my fence and they're, they're turning the whole shit block full of cows down off the, ran above it, so I gotta go home, wait the guys to move my truck. I imagine they'll take my hay.
Yeah, you start working out. Eight minutes? Eight minutes? Well, you like it to come out. Don't worry about it.
I do.
There's one, you know. You got eighteen minutes.
Man, it's probably got you.
Oh, you want me to go grab it?
We, we live in, since we done a lot of now, but you don't have to now.
I can grab it. And is Dana's office open?
Yeah.
It is open, so?
Yeah, the sheriff's, uh, discussion.
Dispatch, your best computer and that.
All figured out.
Well, I think we have some time, so.
Amazing.
Is that confusing?
It's fine.
Yep, these offices and...
How many what?
You in here. Should be...
Oh, uh, quarter to nine. The respective... The emergency room and medical class.
One, like, there's two on, one's doing evaluation, couple of them at the office.
I should, I shouldn't have that.
The farthest you can, second to one, I should. Yeah. I have included Brian, told you, and see if I stayed with him. So, she about that last week.
And sit in this. See, it was on Friday. See, it was on Friday.
Oh, you were out there too? That's why my boots look like that. At a point.
That made it strange. You got paid for it. Yeah, where you were driving, I remember.
So, we were sitting, uh, the sheriff said after the conversation, she said, a hundred bucks. Thank you. Well, they wouldn't let her drive after late, so. Yeah, we're looking at it, go, you know. We get a big, for sure, basically. For sure. You know what I'm saying? Ask if they have one more. Like, you got your washing in, man, needs a washer. You got, you got pursued and got rear ended the other day, he's not doing it.
Oh, really?
Yeah. You're Colorado? Oh, no! Are you?
Yeah, I get to the hospital on Friday, so...
Where is it low? You act like it's down low.
It's, yeah, it's bad.
Yeah.
I don't know, I told him, he wouldn't listen to me when he came in, he was all hunched over just like that. Nah, I'm fine, I went, okay.
You will be, you probably couldn't hardly get out of bed this morning.
Uh, I've had a little better today, Saturday mornings were, uh...
So, Colorado is a total?
Yeah. I think we can sell with you.
I could drive it back.
It needs a bumper and a tailgate.
A bumper and a tailgate.
I leave that receiver hitch on there, that means it's a step.
That thing's steering all the way to the front.
Through engine block and everything, so...
Got whacked.
No, they, they have it. Where don't you get it?
He got hit at mile mark thirty-two.
Thirty-two. That, that seat which is tilted down a little bit, so hoping it's... Yeah, erratic, that's been driving erratic. Is this still recording? Yes.
Probably, everything, everything in the world is around here.
Probably on film even.
It's erratic driving, he got called out, went downhill.
Wait, did he? Caught him one knee into a hole, got him.
That's the second time he's got to eat that hitch. The first time was to a city officer who wasn't paying attention and backed into the oven. That hitch punched right through the...
Right through the charger.
Yeah, the rear bumper of the charger. That's my lucky itch, or unlucky itch.
I usually find one of them with my chin.
Yeah, I just, I just think I still have my itch.
Did I mean that? I'm lying like a, oh, puppy that got his tail stepped wrong.
I usually, I keep my portable radio on the console right here, my cell phone. She hit me so hard and I lost my hat and glasses and the radio and cell phone on the fly. I bailed out, you had a fight with her. I could hear Brian calling me on the radio and I was rolling around like two pigs, you know. She about kicked my ass, so some, some trucker come up there and she jumped on the big pile and threw out her hand up.
There is thirty-two, that's the deal.
It's right at the, the little chop station.
Oh, yeah.
You pulled this? Thank you. Sorry to make you, Ron.
Oh, no.
But Jackson took off, so... They dumped them semi loads of cows in the... They dumped them semi loads of cows in my field and I see that haystack, you know, you don't have a hell of a time. He's got, he's got one of them tractors with him. I know the name, the name, Benson, but I knew all of them.
Oh, particularly rapid at the time.
Bales at the time. So that huge cover, I don't know how far you're allowed to carry it though. Probably cut the fence from all those, uh, ants. With the floodwater.
With Smith, that, that place next to me, they never fed their cows. So they reached in the fence and destroyed all that fence. And Clint Brewer put in a mile and a half of fence and that's all got destroyed. So, or, so then he put his bulls over there, so we were feeding his bulls forever.
Yes, Kim, with you, uh, takes me the confirmation of what kind of... Thank you.
Pretty close. I know what you mean, you paid your taxes. But you got going to the side of the gym, going to the side of the host court, so, right? Okay, okay. So, yeah, uh, you know, the worker pays, uh, I don't know, maybe we're, I don't know. Tim being fourteen months of asking. But she, uh, we've done a whole bunch of others, there's, there's two weekends in the greenhouse, and I... Were you in, though? I keep telling Jack that.
Oh, really, Tom?
I'm good. But this weekend it was nice. Like seventy, upper seventies and still.
Really?
It was nice.
But you take.
Supposed to get hot though later in the week.
I'm just surprised we still don't have any smoke.
At the end of the week, Canada's supposed to come.
Yeah. Figures. It was fun all the last, yeah, yeah.
The Canadians.
The Canadians.
The Canadian courts are supposed to hold in. Which, that's after. Chills.
Can't believe there's only. Oh, my God, that's terrible. We didn't go as fast. Oh, that's weird, that cannot believe that was too.
We were, we were famous, and we were four, eight years, eight, oh, ten years or something like that. And you know that, about that, all of a sudden they're. You gotta get yourself down and all that. It was a go-go-go, but something about the tempo, August, still. Labor day, go-go-go, we did it all down. But it was fun, I guess you'd say, as young.
Yeah. Hmm. I insist, so we get them before the end of the year.
Actually.
They're marked the end of the year, as far as. Yes, exactly, so. Yeah. Yeah. We're framed, so it shouldn't. I don't know, but I still have to scrape.
Yeah. Which most of us. Don't need to be here.
I do that.
They're gonna see.
How big is that?
It's pretty dangerous.
Flags are right there, that was the pad that we marked for, it's pretty big size, it's like eight by almost four.
Is it, is it gonna cause? Should look, is it gonna cause a police walk right there?
Up front? No, it shouldn't with the camera that's up.
Well, if I could go out.
Somebody could hide my name. Look at the camera.
There's who was.
I mean, and. Four of them.
They're supposed to be chanting everything here.
I can't believe we're not.
Well, we took it up.
Yeah!
He, he ran it up there, so I got. Okay, just that agreement thing that Pope made, it was all signed except for some, we'll look on his desk.
Okay.
Okay, Jones, Rick rescuing a haystack, twelve. Dylan, fine. Okay, next on the agenda, discussion and action, interim coroner duties. In terms of over the day, can say.
Well, we've been, I've been a coroner for over twenty years, I rewrote the program in two thousand nine, so we got a little bit of experience, Seth did coroner five years ago, six years ago, it's eleven six. Uh, Dan's been in there for three or four years and Hagan just did coroner school, so. Um, he doesn't have any experience, so I have a sign up sheet down there that we've been doing since Brian designed that, uh, Hagan signed up with, he's shadowing us for learning what to do, so.
Mm-hmm.
Other than that, um, I guess we discussed sheriff's office taking over the coroner's office. Uh, there's only nine counties in the state that is not a sheriff slash coroner. And so, if we take over Shores' sheriff's office, there'll be eight counties. So, that's kinda where the state's going, everybody is taking over the coroner's office.
Anything said?
There's a, there's a lot of paperwork and investigating that goes into those on a different end, um. I know there were some issues after we looked over the records over the last few months, but not a lot of data has been entered, and I think we're trying to get that fixed. Uh, there's fifty-six deaths since the first of the year and then none of the records are complete, so I started in on those, I got one done last week, so that's accomplishment.
Fifty-six and you got one done.
Yeah, by the end of the year, I should have a good.
That was good to get, huh?
Yeah.
That's it, yeah?
Well, it's gonna put a little, uh, added strain to our department with the the corner spot, and then we discussed adding another slot for that possibly, um. But it, it would help automatically if we had a little more help to do that. So there's, I think between the actual call and the time you get done doing all the reporting and everything else, you can contact the doctor's offices and everything else, there's, there's a lot of hours to go into those.
I can manage it.
Yeah.
Especially when you have a load up past this year.
Oh, I've, yeah, I've received faxes from doctors that were probably almost two inches thick, you have to sit through and figure out.
Cause of death?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's not, not fun.
That's the tough part, you gotta reach for all that, and then you gotta determine the cause of death.
And then, you say, get help for that, you know?
It, it would, go ahead.
Wait.
It, it would, it would help out having an extra person that would be more or less not dedicated to the coroner, but helping with those lots, um, I know Dan had showed interest in doing that, but it, it couldn't be just one person doing it, it's just, there's no, there's no way. I, I don't know how we've done it for this long so far, but it's.
Oh, with our other duties too.
Yeah, there's, it can't be done.
Simple question, how you come up with somebody who has those credentials?
Yeah, that's kind of relates to the main question I forgot, but basically I don't.
Okay, that's what the talking to these guys, uh, I, it, it only makes sense to do this long term or forever to get this thing wrapped around, uh, so the interim line, what we're talking today is probably to do. Talking to the sheriff and these guys, uh, to throw those duties back onto the sheriff department when for the last two or three or four, well, probably twelve years, they've always been asking for another deputy, but here, uh, last couple of years, they've been, uh, making a heck of a case of needing a deputy before we throw this stuff off. So, uh, just digging through some of what the other coroners are doing, uh, or the other counties are doing with the coroner, they, they got that pay system set up that we talked to the sheriff with about, uh, how they would, we would move the current coroner's budget into that to get these guys, uh, paid to do what they're doing. With that said, we're, now we're putting the duties of another half-time or full-time guy in that sheriff department without another person. So, if we're gonna do this, I, I think it is imperative that we bust them into another deputy, and that's what talking to the, uh, these guys ahead of time, when they're making it a corner, uh, goal of this system that they've got proposed set up is to get another deputy at the bottom, and then the sheriff and the guys that are current coroners now just take a on-call thing to do your own investigation, I guess it's not worth, but we're in talking to another deputy. And, uh, I've been squeezing numbers and looking at this thing, uh, it's definitely tough to do, uh. But, with that said, uh, we could almost squeeze, squeeze one in this year if we wait a lot over November, December to hire him, because then we'd only have a half-time person for this year, knowing that coming out of the end of this thing, we gotta fund the officer down the road. Uh, it, sheriff says it costs the wages this year, we got, uh, we got cars, we got hopefully guns and all that kind of stuff for him right now, it isn't gonna cost, it's gonna be a squeeze to do it. This is one of the requests that we've, you know, with Mill, I'd be asking for this, uh, uh, they're shorthand.
Quick question that I've got, just kind of a procedural thing, uh, in looking back through the codes. Are there any deputy coroners that were appointed by the coroner or through this process when you said everything?
They're appointed by the coroner?
Yeah, or just appointed as, as, not by maybe the actual man that was the coroner, but when everything is set up, like.
There's me, Seth, Dan, and Peggy.
And you guys are deputy, deputy coroners?
Yes.
Okay, that's the.
The Brian Beal and coroner, he has deputy.
Not deputy.
Let's see, he's.
That's good, that's a good thing because in the absence or vacancy of the coroner, the deputy coroners can act in their absence. If there are no deputy coroners that are official deputy coroners, the, the replacement has to come from another county. And if that was the case, we would ask for a, you know, a, uh, an interim coroner that is a coroner of another county to come in and then appoint deputy coroners, and then they would leave and the deputy coroner would take care of it, but since that's not the case, you know, our, our deputy coroners can certainly take over.
And that's last year on the budget, uh, the same way this, our old coroner, he actually begged or got money into the budget to pay the deputies, so they are official deputies, but it never did get paid, so that is part of the stuff that we have budgeted that, that almost will work.
It's a.
A pay dollar.
They're paying, figuring it out, so.
Yeah.
Uh. Close on that part.
Have no lapse in services and no major increase in spending, which, that's two wins.
So, uh, this, as we sit here, Dr., is an elected position that we're, we're gonna fairly appoint interns to this point, but before election comes, we have got to do an official thing here and combine these offices, am I right on that?
Yes, sir, you are.
Cause it's still an elected position.
It's pretty simple, pretty simple to do, and we're not gonna have to reinvent the wheel and done all of this stuff.
Get it all.
Good.
I'm happy to get that all put together and get it on the old desk.
Anybody else? Yeah, in the back of, you know, the individuals in the back, could you introduce yourself in a minute, you come to listen?
Oh. Oh, sorry, I'm Tabitha, here, just as the union rep for dispatch.
Okay, you know, union president for both dispatch and sheriff.
Did you, did, and handle it for your app?
Sorry, Sexton.
Sexton?
Okay, thanks.
With that said, uh, it says, action. So I need a motion to.
I made, I made move that we, uh, go ahead and appoint the, the sheriff and the sheriff's office as their interim coroner duties.
Okay. We had, uh.
We'd like to maybe just specify that, that in, in their capacity as deputy coroners.
Just leaving as deputy coroners, as their capacity as deputy.
In their capacity, yeah, it could still be them, but in their capacity as deputy coroners, just so that we meet the letter, meet the letter of law.
It's not still be the coroner.
Well, we have, we can have deputy coroners until we complete the process of combining coroner and.
We combine the two offices.
Yes, law says that the deputy coroner can act on behalf of the coroner, the coroners, if it's vacant.
And that's what I said, until that, into next year, this is an elected position.
But we have.
And.
Or we appoint Paul as a coroner on duty. We did that one?
Not necessarily, I don't think, you know, I think that, I don't think so, I think if we're going to elect, if we're gonna appoint uh, an, uh, an interim coroner, that's different than having deputies just substitute in for the coroner. So that's, is that the, just, is that clarif, I just want some clarification on what you guys wanna do, there's two routes to go, will you appoint an interim coroner that's basically taking over that elected position? But I don't think you can hold two elected offices at the same time, so if.
I did it right there.
If you were gonna be appointed as the coroner without combining the offices first, I don't think, I don't think we could legally do that, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's why I think.
Two elected positions.
No, that's why we need to get on the board to do away with this elected position, so nobody files for us.
Correct.
We can do it before they, the filing period, but they'll start filing for elections in January, I do believe.
We gotta just do.
And if you're on that timeline, you cannot do it then.
Correct.
We should leave some.
Yes. Just do it immediately.
And then, then you could be the coroner.
With that said, did all of them ever say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign, or anyone opposed to that? Congratulations on the.
Condo.
Then we'll hopefully have the budget tightened up here a little bit in a couple more weeks, because I'm looking like the sheriff, uh, don't hire anybody yet, but we'll be looking maybe here in Thanksgiving or whatever.
I think we have enough to, gotta shift the work order between the four, so we should, you know, fairly well, but that extra volume, I don't know why.
And that you have to get it in there to be a.
Yeah, I think it averages any time. But hires, I guess it is. So, get somebody to, uh, be interested anyway, but no one's coming up.
Nope.
They go.
Thanks.
Make sure.
There's a vet house still out.
I know, I might run out there, I'll be out, running out to the vet house, maybe he's over there.
I'll make him walk.